This conference will now be recorded.
All right. Good evening and welcome to the Alpena City Council Meeting of November 20th, 2023. Call the order, please.
Mayor Potem Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Here.
Councilmember Noah?
Here.
Councilmember Walchak?
Here.
And Mayor Walder?
Here. Please rise for the pledge.
The pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval of the tonight's agenda.
Still moved. Second.
Mayor Potem Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
Councilmember Walchak?
Yes.
Aye. Thank you. Any proposed modifications to the agenda?
Sure.
Okay, approval of the minutes for regular and closed sessions of November 6, 2023. Any issues? Okay, public comment. Citizens are, citizens appearing before council on agenda and non-agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address your concerns. If you'd like to do so, please come to the podium and state your name and address to our clerk for her records. This is the only time during a council meeting that citizens are allowed to address council. No one in the room? Anyone online? Tonight's consent agenda. A, bills to be allowed in the amount of $339,560.86 and authorize Mayor Walagora and Clerk Soick to sign the warrant. B is renew the 2024 property and liability insurance policy with Michigan Municipal League for $152,245, which is set to expire on December 31st, 2024. Sorry. Michigan Department of Transportation contract number 23-5460 be approved and Mayor Walagora and City Clerk Soick to be authorized to sign the contract on behalf of the city. And D is council reappointment of Kathleen Melville Hall and Griffin Sadler to the Recreation Advisory Board for a three-year term to expire on December 1st, 2026. I move we approve the consent as intended as presented.
Support.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
Councilmember Walchak?
Yes.
Mayor Walagora?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Johnson?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have the presentation from Montiel Birmingham, Planning and Zoning and Development Director on Short-Term Rentals in the City of Alpena. Yep.
Okay, thank you. We had talked a long time ago about housing and general zoning and also part of that presentation was short-term rentals. We also had shared some information several months ago on the status of short-term rentals within just the city of Alpena. So this is an update and next step to that information provided. So as we go through the slides, which I'll try to move through pretty quickly, just, I guess, be thinking about what potential next steps could be and potential direction and where you think the community is at in terms of these things. So, Steve, if you want to move forward, one, we'll go through regulation perspectives, some benchmarking, current city of Alpena metrics, ordinance options to consider, and then what decisions we need to make. So first, regulation perspectives. There are a few different perspectives in terms of, you know, having more regulation and why, or less regulation and why. So some of those things, in terms of people that would like more regulation, you typically hear things like saturation. So displacement of year-round residents, creation of dark city blacks where there's no one living there anymore, housing costs, particularly increasing housing prices for year-round residents. And then a community. So reducing year-round residents, contributing less to community schools, local businesses, et cetera. Occupancy, meaning increasing opportunity for noise and potential nuisances, insufficient off-street parking, and then inconsiderate behavior from renters on vacation mode. So those are the typical responses from people who would like to see more regulation. For those that would like to see less regulation, affordability is, is one. So short-term rentals might be needed for mortgage or tax payments. There's more and unique options for places to stay within the community, particularly around events, that it can be seen as anti-business, having burdensome regulations for business and property owners, and the legality of it. So achieving a legitimate governmental objective in the least restrictive manner, and is it accomplishing that or not? And then future commitments. So some owners already operating as a short-term rental may have future commitments already booked. So keeping in mind all of these things, we should always be thinking about health, safety, and welfare in any type of regulation that there might be. So on the next slide is some benchmarking items. There was a recent MSU extension training and a lot of this information on this slide came from that training. It was very good. Inherently, I think, you know, short-term rentals are not good or bad. It depends on the community and every community is different. Exclusionary land use practices, so banning all short-term rentals can be seen as exclusionary, which would not be legal. The National Compound Annual Growth Rate for short-term rentals from 2023 to 2030 is projected to be 10.8%, more than doubling the current market value. And the largest growth being seen nationally and in Michigan is coming from small city rural communities near waterfront, which is exactly where we are. And definitions, one thing that is so important are definitions. So what do we mean by dwelling? What types of short-term rentals are we interested in having or not interested in having? So for example, hosted, unhosted, or dedicated. So hosted sharing would be the primary occupants of a residence remain onsite with guests. Unhosted would be primary occupants vacate the unit while it is rented to short-term guests. And then dedicated would be there are no primary occupants. It's strictly a full-time, short-term rental residence. And then lastly, what did the court say? So several recent court cases have found that short-term rentals are a commercial use even though the activity is residential in nature. So on the next slide, you'll see where the city of Alpena sits right now. So this is strictly just looking at short-term rentals we're aware of within city limits. So we currently have 38 units. Nine of those units, 24%, their owners are from either lower Michigan or out of state. 22 units, 58% are located in a single-family zoning district, and 11 units are located above commercial properties. So some of the charts down below break out in different ways what those percentages and units are. So you can see them by district. You can also see ownership. So of the ones that are in the city, you can see that five of those owners live in Elkhona County, for example, six live in Alpena County, 15 within the city, et cetera. And then the next slide shows the map. Hard to see, but there's yellow pins throughout the city with labels for the address. And all of those yellow pins are a short-term rental. So some of the trends that you can see just by looking at the map are State Street in particular, and one or two blocks in from State Street are becoming popular in terms of locations, as well as Washington Avenue, there are more popping up. And then that Campbell Street Corridor, there are more popping up as you get closer to Chisholm. So we also have some in the downtown area, the commercial area, but those specific residential areas, we're starting to see more of them. So the next slide shows some options to consider. So this breaks it down by municipal ordinance and zoning ordinance. So for most short-term rental regulations or communities that we've seen, they break it out between a combination of some parts in the municipal code and some parts in zoning. So for different options, for example, a setting a maximum number that would limit interference with housing. Some communities were doing percentages or ratios, but it seems that more of them are moving away from that, and they're just doing a strict number maximum. They're also seeing minimum distances between trying to limit specific areas becoming overly saturated with short-term rentals. Limiting length of stay, so one to two-night minimum versus a one-week minimum, trying to ensure basically that residents that might be living next door are not seeing turnover constantly on the property next to them. Keeping in mind, though, as we go through these, that we also have to consider how we monitor this, and we can talk more about that later. Occupancy is another way that they're being regulated, typically are being seen in areas that have septic capacity concerns, which for us probably isn't as much of an issue. Having a local contact for prompt handling of complaints and inspections, which we already do that through our rental registration program. Licenses, the number of licenses per parcel. So for example, considering parcels with an accessory dwelling unit and the potential benefits of having, and having the owner onsite at the primary residence. Limiting permits per year, so balancing ownership and occupancy with long and short-term options. An example of that could be you have college students living in it, you know, for the nine months out of the year that they're going to school, and then during the summer months when they're not there, you're using it as a short-term rental. Limits, limiting permits per applicant, encouraging breadth and ownership. One of the issues that has been talked a lot about on this one is that there are ways to circumvent that, and is it, you know, quality versus quantity. So someone can have an LLC and have so many units, and then they can form another LLC with different, you know, so there's some ways to get around that, and is that important to us or not? And then types of structures. So for example, sometimes we're seeing a little bit of relaxation with if it's in a condo or an apartment complex versus if it's in a residential neighborhood. So and then you're also seeing some new types of short-term rentals happening. So like NRVs or in tents or, you know, kind of more glamping experiences, if you will. And then the next slide talks more about zoning ordinance specifics. So limiting it to only certain zoning districts, for example, commercial or those that are surrounding commercial, different classifications, commercial area versus residential area, or an overlay zone. So an overlay zone might be appropriate where you don't want to have an entire district opened up to a short-term rental, but segments of that district. So we would literally just draw a map and say, you know, we would be okay with them here. And depending on the community, they're doing it a lot of, a lot of different ways. It really is just a matter of what is working for us. So some of the decisions that we need to make and think about is, number one, does the community want to regulate it? Right now, we have 38, but you saw some of the information provided. We are seeing more of them, and we're not out there looking for them all the time. I mean, when we have time, we go out to the websites and, and see how many there are and make sure that they're registered. But it's very manual for us right now. There are tools out there that can assist with searching and kind of sweeping the sites to understand how many there are and if they're meeting your ordinance requirements. What are the goals of a program for us? That is unique, depending on the area. And then defining what a short-term rental means for us. And then where, form, and how many. So meaning, you know, do we want to include accessory dwelling units and them are not owner-occupied versus not only above commercial, for example. So there's so many different ways we could look at this. And then management of the programming. So licensing, identification, if we want to do something above and beyond what, you know, the rental registration program already does, that could be a licensing option. Terms, and then monitoring and enforcing. So anything that we put into an ordinance, we have to be able to monitor and enforce. So being cognizant of those things. So that's, that's it. That's the update. So I think really for, for me, it's, what is your perspective on, do you want to continue to, you know, pursue looking at options and regulations? What is your perspective on, on them in general? And do we keep kind of moving forward? Or, and certainly, we would want to get public feedback as well, and invite everyone to kind of participate in way on.
Based on how often you manually look and find short-term rentals, or just know that they are, because obviously some people will come in and get permit knowing it's a rental, how, how, is it growing at a rate that you feel is alarming, that this should probably be addressed really soon? Or, or are we, does it feel like we're okay?
I mean, I think it's probably slowly been growing, but we haven't really been monitoring it for that long. I think when we started the conversations, probably last year, is when we really started to go on the websites and take a look. So I wouldn't be able to give you like a percentage increase year over year or anything.
I find it alarming. I do. There, since we have a housing crisis, we have many homes that are already just seasonal pieces of property in any case, and people locally can't afford to buy these homes that do go up for sale because Airbnb, people come in and swoop in pay over asking prices, and people just can't afford to buy. Unfortunately, that's the way America is going. I know abroad, it's more common to have the owner living in the house. And I, and I think that's a nice way of looking at it. I do think we have to put limits on it now, effectively now, before it gets out of hand, before we can't put any limits on it. Just my perspective on it.
I think we can address the shortage of housing units around here for long-term rentals or anything else without addressing this situation here, or the NECs, or anything else that goes along with those. Back a couple of years ago, when the houses were being snapped up, they were being bought online, they were being paid far more than what the asking price was.
Yeah.
Which was telling me that it was a more commercial value, if you will, than something else was happening there. And so that's greatly reducing the stock that the people who need to have housing around here for. How do you fix one without addressing the other? I just don't see it.
My neighborhood's filling up with Airbnbs, I think, on the market, and the real estate agents are big time. And I understand their goal is to make money, and it's quick, and it's lots, and it's more than they anticipate. They had sold to, say, a consumer. Right now, with interest rates being what they are, makes it even more difficult for people to afford housing. So in effect, we're strangling our own citizens by allowing Airbnb to take over. I think we have to put a number on it, create a waiting list. Wasn't, was it Towas who didn't cut it off in the nick of time, or they, they did create some kind of?
They have one now. I think they max theirs out at 30, I believe. There are communities that have waiting lists. Some of them are inspecting them every three years. Some of them are every year. It depends on the licensing as well. Sometimes they have to reapply every year. Some have to do it every three years. It really, it's all over the board. Yeah.
So assuming that we get this process started now, this is something that's going to start in with you and the Planning Commission, and then work its way through?
I think so. I think, though, that the Planning Commission, you know, has very specific role in terms of where, whereas a lot of the other questions in terms of how much and distances and different things like that licensing is here. So probably as a joint discussion, maybe at some point, to talk about it as a group.
And that would be fine, to meet joint, to meet jointly. So we're all going in the same direction. Why don't we set that up in January? Because of holidays and all.
Yeah.
Doing things.
I would add that, you know, I think all of you know that this has been evaluated at the state level quite extensively, and, you know, it kind of comes and goes as to whether or not, I think it could come back that the state would want to regulate it. I don't know if it would make a difference if we have a local program to, to manage those. So I think at least we should look at some type of management. But I also want to stress that it has to be reasonable and feasible for our staff to, to regulate. And, you know, if we are going to manage, say, a licensing program, then we would have to charge, you know, a sufficient amount to cover their time.
Yeah. Yeah. And I think it's definitely a topic worth spending probably a significant amount of time on with both groups.
We charged enough money, we could hire someone to do the job of regulating and keeping track, and, and that would be nice, because I don't see much difference between an Airbnb and a hotel. So if we treat them like they're a business, then they should be taxed like a business. I'm sorry, one more plug for, let's get together and meet and vote against them.
So let's, I'll leave it to you to open up, really whenever, whenever all the parties are, have some time.
Can I ask a question? Can we do an ad hoc committee with some planning commissioner, some council, like we did for Murrells, and discuss that and get ideas coming out of that, instead of two great big bodies getting together?
Yeah. Are you volunteering? Oh. Okay.
That's fine. Yeah, if you want to start. Might be a better way to start. Or if you want to start big and then make a head hot committee out of that meeting, it doesn't matter to me either way.
We can work out the details later.
You want to mill it, mill it over? I don't know. Sounds good. But yeah, I think that's definitely something worthy having further discussion on, because we have all seen and heard stories of, you know, communities that were taken over by some of the short-term rentals too, and grocery stores having closed because of year-round. I mean, that's a reality in the U. It is. And so it is worrisome, but I want more information before I make any kind of decision on that. So I'd love to hear more information.
Thank you.
All right.
Next one question. Has the Planning Commission had any exposure to this particular presentation?
Not to this one.
So maybe that's a good place to start. And then I like the idea of the ad hoc committee.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Fine with that. Receive and file, I would assume.
I move we receive and file the short-term rental report.
Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
Councilmember Walchak?
Yes.
Mayor Walder?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Johnson? And Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
All right, thank you. First under Report of Officers is the first reading of Ordinance 23-499, which amends the City of Alpena zoning ordinance, Article 5, zoning districts. And Attorney Bill Pfeifer is going to kick that one off.
Thank you, Mayor. This is ordinance 23-499. It would amend the City of Alpena zoning ordinance, Article 5, zoning districts, would essentially amend allowing tattoo slash piercing studios by right, not by special use, in the following districts, the CBD, the CCD, B2, B3, and I-1. Several of these businesses are already operating and have been operating for a substantial period of time. So this is, some of this is just basically letting them operate legally, or they've already been operating for a while. Section 2 is a severability clause. Section 3 is a savings clause. Section 4 is the effective date. You asked me if council had the authority to go ahead and approve this today if you wanted to, and you could do that because this is zoning change, zoning district change, just giving them the right to do it there automatically versus special use. So you could do that. You're not required to do that, but if you wanted to go right to voting tonight, you could do so.
And I don't have any issue with that.
I don't. Montiel, do you have an issue? I don't.
No, I have no issues with approving it. You're good? I move we approve ordinance number 23-499.
Okay.
I think Danny got it.
Councilmember Walchak?
Yes.
Mayor Walagora?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Johnson? Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Next is the third reading of ordinance number 23-496, which expands the boundaries of the Downtown Development Authority.
Consistent with council policy, this would not be read. So at this point, your options are to either approve it as written, deny it as written, or you could do what the allies guys do sometimes, which is to postpone, defer to, although this has been postponed once before. So, well, so, I think, yes, I thought, so, and Mr. Boyd is here as well, if there's any questions regarding the DDA aspect of it. I'm sure they can answer that for you.
Yeah. And obviously, there's been question, and you, one or both of you are here to address that, which is
I'll take a stand.
Some type of reimbursement to the residents.
So as I understand it, the proposal here is to offer a rebate to property owners along Chisholm Street with a residential use. It's important to note, though, that those properties are not in residentially zoned districts. They're zoned primarily B2 or CCD. And it's my understanding that the city cannot offer the rebate under the General Property Tax Act. So the question becomes whether the Downtown Development Authority can, and if so, whether they should offer such a rebate. And as you've seen from the memo that I've prepared, I believe, it's been circulated, we're operating in a vast gray area here. Statutes are unclear, and there is no case law that's analyzing these specific issues. So it's my position that we're in an area that is ripe for litigation, should you choose to go that route. Is the, is the rebate allowed? Is the DDA able to do a rebate? It's not clear. We're not sure. It's not outright prohibited in the DDA Act, but under the Act, the DDA is explicitly an instrumentality of the city by statute. And so we may have to comply with city guidelines under the General Property Tax Act. That has not been litigated, so it's not clear. Moreover, it's our position that any rebate would have to be specifically tailored to one of the permitted purposes under the DDA. So it would have to be for a specific developmental purpose under the plan as it exists. And so it can't just be, well, we're going to give the money back. It has to be, we're doing it for this specific purpose, and that becomes a complicating factor. The bottom line is, from the looks of it, if we were to adopt a rebate scheme, it would invite litigation. And it's not at all clear how that litigation would resolve. We can't say whether it would be in our favor or not, because we're in front of courts that haven't had to decide this issue. They don't have a lot of guidance. Which brings us to the question of, well, even if we can, should we adopt this sort of scheme? I've been in this business for a long time. I represent a lot of municipalities in litigation matters and as a private attorney. I've never seen a similar proposal. And I've consulted with quite a few municipal attorneys as I've been looking at this issue. They have said the same thing. They haven't seen it either. And every one of them had the same answer when I asked them the question, well, should we do this? They said, no, it's a bad idea. Why? It comes down to the cost-benefit analysis. The risk of litigation, the cost of litigation, the chance that we don't, we get a result that we don't like, the uncertainty of that result, coupled with the fact that we get essentially a very minimal gain if it's, if it's a allowable proposal. And, you know, the simple fact of the matter is, we're here tonight. We've been here on a number of occasions, my first time here, obviously. But I know that this is an issue that's been lingering for a long time. None of the affected property owners came here and pounded the table and public commented and said, please, give us our money back. Nobody's crying out for this. And that says something as well. When they have notice of all these issues, everybody knows the DDA is trying to expand the boundaries, and nobody's complaining about this. None of the affected property owners are saying, we don't want this. And in fact, when there was a time that there were some affected property owners that were asking to be excluded, we excluded them from that proposed district. And so I'm happy to answer any questions you have, but we're operating in some murky territory here.
I think, I appreciate it. I don't have any questions.
I have a question.
Sure.
So the residential property owners in this district, can they benefit from the same, let's say, a facade grant? Can they benefit from those same programs that the businesses can?
I don't see why not. I don't see why not. I I I mean, I think what we had talked about was some sort of onboarding period for the expanded district so that the the money would catch up. But, you know, with the new scheme from the county, it may be that they're eligible right away, but I don't see why we would distinguish between properties that are used for residential purposes as opposed to properties that are used for purely commercial purposes.
So they they would be entitled to all of the benefits everyone else has.
From my perspective, yes.
You've been reading my notes, haven't you? Well, I have the thing written down. That was for the law.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I was looking at, well, where's equal justice for the private property residents? If the businesses can't apply for facade grants and things like this, why then could not the residents of the private properties apply for uh, the same thing to improve the property values of the area around? And I'd be happy to see that.
Okay, from my perspective, I don't see any reason why they couldn't. Now, if we're talking about state grants, I don't know if they would meet those requirements because those are outside of the DDA's control. But in terms of facade grants that we decide on, I only have one vote. Um, and I only have one analysis here, but my take is a property is a property is a property, and we evaluate based upon the proposals that were made to us. And so if a residential property comes to us with a good plan, I don't see why we wouldn't consider that and possibly approve it.
Well, I would be okay for that idea. The idea of of taking the dollars from them otherwise and not out offering to paint their house or or shovel their sidewalks or something like this, you know, uh, that I didn't like the idea of. But if they can go to improve their properties through the same process, I'm okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think from my perspective, it would be subject to the same processes that we have in place, but certainly they would be eligible.
And they be informed of that.
Sure.
Okay.
You have a camera right here. But yeah, uh, but absolutely. I mean, why why not uh, let property owners know that they're eligible for programs? I mean, that's one of the benefits of the idea of expansion in the first place.
So we don't know if they're, if they submit something for a grant, might be approved, but we know they aren't necessarily excluded.
At least in terms from my, yeah, I I can't speak to the state grant programs because each of them has different requirements, and they have more insight into that. Uh, but the long and the short of it is, if we have a facade program that's internal to the DDA, I don't see why we wouldn't consider applications from any property within our district.
I'm good with that.
Anything else? Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Matt.
This has been a a long road in this one for this.
It has.
Well, we could all, you know, kind of sit back and look and, you know, remember back to, at least I can, to when we did not have a DDA at all, remembering our downtown. Um, because I was working in the retail sector at that time, too, and it's made a big impact uh, on the community and really greatly improved our downtown to the point where we have outdoor dining and, I mean, we're talked about in other communities. I mean, I think every one of us have an example of when that's happened. So, I mean, I'm, uh, you know, there's been a few speed bumps here, and I'm glad that we're able to take care of the residential area over in on the river, you know, the riverfront, a river street, pardon me. But I think this is a, this is a good program for Alpena. I think i- if you look at this overall, I think it's a greater good. Um, you know, I don't like the idea of somebody paying for something that they can't, you know, enjoy the benefits of, but it sounds like that's been addressed. Um, I just want to, you know, make those comments and I think it's good for us as a community to move forward. That's where I'm at.
And I would like to say, um, it's worked really hard to try to get this so through so that the 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 property owners can benefit because there's lots of improvements that can happen. I just wish, and this is just me personally, I just wish that the opt out would have never been brought up like it was an option, um, and shame on me for not knowing that before we got to this point, but nobody really did. Um, but I have to say that the benefit of approving the district far outweighs people not getting back a thousand dollars in taxes. Um, knowing that they can still be involved in all of the programs, at least the local programs that the DDA offers. I'm good with that. I'm good with that. This is, this is a benefit to the, to the city in ways that are immeasurable. That's what I.
Entertained a motion to approve the ordinance number twenty three dash four nine six.
So moved.
Second.
Mayor Walagora?
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
Councilmember Walchek?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Up is the third reading of reading of ordinance number twenty three dash four nine seven, which adopts an amended and restated downtown development authority development and tax increment financing plan.
Again, this would not be read unless one of the individual members has it to be read, and I'm not sure that there's uh, any other things to discuss as it relates to this. This is just the the tax increment financing part of the new plan. So just I think need a need a motion and a vote yea or nay at this point.
I move we approve ordinance twenty three dash four nine seven.
Second.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
Councilmember Walchek?
Yes.
And Mayor Walagora?
Hi.
Thank you. Thank you, Ann and Mike and Matt and everybody else that's put so much time into this. I really appreciate it.
I have a lot of education.
All right, next up is the mayoral vacancy discussion, and Bill Piper is gonna enlighten us briefly.
I think he has the memo. I will be brief with this regard. Obviously, you all know that Mayor Walagora has announced his position effective December thirty first of twenty twenty three. His term expires on December thirty first of twenty twenty four. Um, under the filling vacancy section of the charter, uh, the council has thirty days from the date that the vacancy is effective to fill it. So in this case, you'd have thirty days from December thirty first to fill it. There is no uh, specific uh, procedure or policy that says how you need to fill it. Uh, it just says that whoever fills it has to be um, you know, a qualified qualified for eligibility. And section uh, three point two looks at eligibility criteria, uh, which for uh, all council members is the same. There's one difference uh, for the mayor, and that is the mayor has to be at least thirty years of age. Uh, but uh, the mayor and all council members have to be uh, not behind on their taxes, uh, have to be with us to the city at this point, only for one year, uh, no longer for the three years, and otherwise eligible to be in office. Uh, so meaning, you know, don't have any other disqualifying things that would that would have you be considered. Um, I did speak with Rachel earlier today, and one of the questions was uh, does council have to solicit applications? Uh, and there is no, nothing in the charter nor anything under state law that requires council to do that. The only thing that council is required to do is to fill that vacancy within thirty days. Historically, when there have been a council member vacancies, which has not happened very often, but it's happened a few times. Uh, the city has solicited applications for consideration. Uh, and so um, consistent with what has been done in the past, uh, you can do that, but you don't have to do that. So at this point, um, if you wanted to do that, obviously, we need to post that. We need to get the message out to the public uh, that we will accept them for a certain period of time. Uh, you really can't act on filling the vacancy until the first meeting uh, in January. Uh, and so uh, if you accept applications, uh, and there are a voluminous number of those, then it may make sense to uh, schedule something other than a regular council meeting for consideration of those, or uh, if you had a lot of them, uh, could be internally and decide that we would interview these two people, or these three people, or these eight people, if you felt there were eight people that were qualified to be considered. But uh, until we, until we know whether there's any other interest, uh, you know, is all you have to do is be prepared to appoint somebody on the first meeting uh, in January. Uh, and then depending upon who is appointed, uh, that may, if it's a, if it's a member of council as it currently exists, then that may create a vacancy in that council member's seat, and then we would have to essentially do the same thing. We'd have to fill that seat. So unless there's any questions, that's kind of where we're at. We just need to know, I think, from a staff standpoint, uh, if you want to solicit applications or if you just want to come back. Uh, not sure what is it, January third?
Second.
Second. Just wanted to come back on January second without Mayor Walagora and fill the vacancy in any fashion that feels appropriate.
Cindy would be acting mayor until that seat is filled?
Correct.
Keep your hands up.
Mayor Pro Tem would uh, uh, once there's a resignation, uh, in terms of its effective date, uh, Mayor Pro Tem would be temporarily appointed mayor to run those meetings until that vacancy is filled, which can be that same, that can be that same. So um, obviously, like I said, there's no procedure that you must follow under state law or the, or under the charter that says you have to solicit application. Uh, and you can choose from within if that's, if that's where council wishes to choose from.
How many voting members would there be on the day that we need to have selected if Mayor Walagora is not here? That leaves four.
If only four, yeah.
We don't fill the vacancy until the mayoral vacancy is filled.
Right.
So what what happens if there's disagreement amongst the council, or it's a tie for that matter?
Well, that, we discussed that internally, and uh, we're hoping that doesn't occur. So uh, we, I guess, the best I can say is we'll cross that bridge when we get to it, I guess.
Okay.
But it it's obviously right for the possibility that
Yeah.
somebody makes a nomination, and it's two two, and somebody makes another nomination, and it's two two. And uh, that can't go on forever because there's only four of you, but uh,
With the drawing rocks like we do.
Well, the same, the same thing could have happened when we filled y- your seat.
Right.
Were appointed from Amber Hess, and there were four of us, and we didn't really, I don't remember us even really discussing what what would happen.
But I I wasn't.
Till it happened.
She was elected, too.
I I was, I'm sorry, I wasn't chosen.
Oh, I'm sorry. It was Jesse Osmer.
We had a point system?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we, you know, we did a point system, so um, you know, however that happens, but I'd be with Bill. I'd cross that bridge if it happens and from there.
So if there was more than one candidate um, for the mayoral seat, there would be interviews? Meeting?
Well, once again, you're not required by law to do that. Okay, so I don't want to send the message to you that if you had three people, you have to interview all three, and you have to, you know, there's something that says you have to do that. I think from a transparency standpoint, that's the way we've done it in the past. Uh, just so that I think everybody uh, felt that there was level playing field and that everybody uh, you know, that was a member of the community, had the chance to throw their hat in the ring if they wanted to throw their hat in the ring. I can't remember how many. It seemed like we had several interviews um, for Amber's position.
Yeah.
I think.
Probably five.
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 I think that we interviewed all five that showed interest. So I guess it depends on the interest. I mean, if we have twenty, it might be a little difficult, especially on one evening. But uh, and I can't remember if we did a special meeting. I think we did. Yeah. So I guess we wouldn't know for sure until, the only thing we, uh, I think we can say for sure right now is that at that first meeting, Cindy would become the mayor uh, until that vacancy is actually voted on. Charter says that the Mayor Pro Tem is is the mayor in light of a vacancy, either temporary or permanent in the mayor's position.
And I'll just point out that that council still has two meetings in December before and before that thirty days even start. So that's thirty days doesn't even start until the thirty first, so. Um, so I'm not sure if, and it's up whether Bill was, didn't seem as he was pushing for a decision tonight, but but there's.
The only thing I would ask council to do is that, is that if if the, if your pleasure is to accept nominations or applications, so to speak, that we let the public know that in a press release, and that you set a time on doing that. So that, you know, there's enough time uh, prior to the first meeting to digest that and to figure out whether you want to interview those folks or uh, if there aren't. If there isn't a lot of interest, then that, you know, makes it a little bit easier as to what you're going to do on that first meeting.
And it wouldn't take me long to, you know, come up with an application. We can use a form that we had before, just modified. So I would just need to know if that's what you would like me to do.
I would just like to add that, um, also in the requirements to be in that council seat or mayoral seat, um, you have to be a registered electorate in the city.
That's, that's correct. You have to be registered to vote here at the city limits.
So we have two choices right now. We can say, let's nominate somebody. And then, or decide if we want to do an election process.
Yeah, the the choice, the choice that you would have tonight in terms of directing staff, what you wanted to do would be to say, accept applications, or we will deal with it on January second as an agenda item and make a decision then, but uh, I mean, to me, uh, it it makes sense that if you're going to accept nominations, that you do it now, not wait till that first meeting and then say, we're gonna accept applications because then you're into that thirty days, and it makes it much tougher to, you know, to try to do all that by the end of January.
Got you.
And I I have had some questions from the media, so I could um, this evening, put together some information based upon what Bill has provided and go ahead and send that out, and then we could release the applications when we're ready with that. If that's what you choose.
What sort of deadline do we want on that?
I would suggest, um, I mean, we have time to, you know, leave it open for at least a couple of weeks.
Yeah, I think the last time it was.
We really can't do anything with it.
No, we wouldn't. Yeah, I mean, for that matter, we could leave it open until right before the holidays or the um, Christmas holiday.
Well, the interest, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
In the interest of transparency, then, we have a council member who's very interested in becoming the next mayor and filling Matt's seat. Seems to me Cindy would be the person, since she's mayor pro tem, but I don't know about either Mike or Danny, what your thoughts are.
Thing was because of what we have in the works, it's like this, to have someone come from outside who doesn't have been in the meetings and understand what's going on, that I think the continuation with what we're doing here is easier from someone from the council itself and then fill the council seat that has come out.
Right.
That's my feeling of it.
I don't disagree.
Mike?
Well, you know, I've given a lot of thoughts, you know, because I ran against somebody who was appointed, you know, and I always said that's it's a really tough challenge to overcome. So, you know, so my concern is that if we appoint somebody, were we given an advantage, you know? So you asked a question if I was interested, and I said, yes, I would be interested for a year. I'm not planning on running. You know, that would be, you know, the only reason. That would be, you know, the only reason I would be interested in filling that is because I think I could do a good job and I think I could fill it for a year. And then, you know, all the players for the mayor seat are on equal ground. That's my thoughts on that. So we would have to have a good discussion and I really do, I, I think that, you know, myself, I think it should come from council. That's what I've been thinking, you know?
I agree with you on that.
Yeah.
I think it should come from within. And, and I'm speaking as someone who came into this with no experience. It takes a while. This is an extreme learning curve just to be on the city council. And I think I watch you on your jobs and just think, you do great work. So I think we need somebody who's going to take over for that year, who knows what's going on.
My thoughts.
And I would just like to say, I've been mayor pro tem for almost nine years and I would like to throw my hat in for the seat as well. So, but I do think it should come from council.
So we're agreed on that, which is nice.
Mm-hmm. Now, where are we going to have the wrestling match?
Echo Roman or freestyle?
Well, that's the only answer that staff needed for tonight.
Right, okay.
Anything else would be
You want to throw your hat in the ring too?
Maybe.
What you dare.
Back in time then. Send out some information to media after the meeting.
Okay. That way, because that's, that's truly the only information that you needed tonight. The decision doesn't have to be made tonight, I just assumed it wasn't, so. And that's just me sitting here still.
So my, my correct consensus is that you will choose from within on January 2nd. And then we'll go from there in terms of, once there's a vacancy on council, or council member vacancy, then we'll move to fill that next.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because that's, that's the only day you'll know how long that vacancy will be because, because the two that have suggested
Yeah.
are on different cycles. Very good.
I have one question. So since we're not putting out an application for the mayor, could we go ahead and put something out for council? Knowing that there will be a council, you know, at least one council vacancy.
I think it's proven to do that because it is holidays and that 30 days will flip by quicker than we think.
You know, it's going to be a council seat.
And how long that, how long that position will be for will be determined late, at a later date.
That would be through the end of your term.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, you're correct. Because, yeah, because we know the scenarios now.
Yeah.
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 Okay. Yeah.
They fill it out since December 31st of 2024.
Very good, okay.
So I'll work on something and, you know, get into Bill and have Anna take a look at it as well. And it'll be very similar to what we did with Councilwoman Hess.
But even though we have two that are interested in it, it still goes out to the public if anybody in the public is interested in it.
No, it does not have to. Nothing that says
Everybody gets an equal opportunity.
Well, there's nothing, there's nothing in the charter or state law that says that council has to solicit applications or nominations for it. It's just silent on that issue. So if the consensus, I think you should vote tonight to say we're going to fill from within so that at least you've officially taken that action if you're not going to open it up. And like I said, it's happened so infrequently in the past that the couple of times that it has, it was posted, I don't remember exactly what the posting was or how it went out. I mean, the most recent one obviously was when Mr. Osmer filled out Amber's. I don't even think there was that much left of that one.
No.
Relatively short.
Yeah, and the difference here is that, well, just, I won't reiterate what council already discussed, but council already discussed that they're, they want to fill the position from within. So, so we won't be taking applications for this, for my position when it's vacant. But we will be taking applications from, to fill the seat that's left, once that's assigned. And so you want to vote on that this evening.
I think you should, yeah, just so that it's clear that that's, that's what council has to do.
I would move that we fill the mayor's position from within the council through December of 2024.
Second.
Through December of 2020. Oh, four, yes. I lost it here.
But he was supposed to stay till
Make sure whoever, whether we get, pay your taxes.
Don't move.
All right, thank you, Bill.
Yes.
Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
Councilmember Walchuk?
Yes.
Mayor Walagora? Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Could we get a motion for also putting out the application for council? Unless Bill thinks it's unnecessary? And then have, decide on a date that we will continue to accept those?
You might as well just do it right now. You're going to have a shorter turnaround on that, obviously, because you're only going to have until, well, you're going to have from January 2nd for 30 days, so February 1st. I don't know when our first meeting is in February. And our, our second meeting in January is January 15th, I believe. So unless you're prepared, unless you take them now, you're not going to have much of a turnaround between January 2nd and January 15th. It might require you to have a special meeting for that point.
How would that motion need to be worded?
Just that council moves to accept applications at this point for the upcoming vacant council member position that will be determined as of January 2nd.
Everyone okay with that? Council moves that we
Well, that, those, those won't be from council members, those will be for that
For the council
For the council position that's going to be filled. As we know, one of these remaining members is going to become mayor on January 7th. So we'll know one of their seats will then be officially vacant at that point. We only have 30 days to fill it. So if we wait till then, we have this real short turnaround time in terms of soliciting applications and your only other meeting in January is January 15th. So you really don't, I mean, even if you left it open for 10 days, you'd be cutting it real close to that January 15th meeting.
And the only thing I'd add to the motion is give Rachel some direction as to when you want those, the deadline for that, for those applications. For that seat. By the Twenty, I mean, all the way through December and then
I mean, you could even go up to, if we're shooting for the January 15th council meeting, you could even go up to January 5th or the 8th. I, I would prefer that first week in January just to give us some time to, you know, compile.
Right. And then set a special meeting on that second week.
Yeah.
Of the interviews.
I mean, we could do it on January 15th during a regular council meeting, if there's time, depending on how many applications you have.
Oh, interviews during a regular meeting?
Right, I mean, it, it's possible if we, you know, don't have 20.
So just some deadline, whatever you guys are comfortable with.
I'd say through, even if we go through January 2nd, that could be enough time to kind of process everything all of December and so on. Or up to January 8th, you know?
I mean, if we can get them out, get out a press release, it wouldn't be until, I might be able to get it this week, but at the latest, next week.
I'd say.
What'd you think about keeping it a little further away from the new year? And it, since it's a special meeting, couldn't it be on, say, Thursday evening? Unless that conflicts with any of your schedules, rather than at a city council meeting?
I can see us probably appointing somebody at a special meeting. And I think we did that the last time, if I'm not mistaken.
I'm just going through this in my mind. January 5th is Friday, correct?
Yeah.
So that would give us
That would also give members of the public to digest, you know, which one of you is now mayor and give them a couple of days still to throw their hat in the ring, but also give us enough time between January 5th and 15th to decide whether we could have a special meeting. Because we've got eight people that have applied or we can just do it on the 15th because we only have one person that's applying.
Anyway, this would be good.
Yeah, that's it.
I think that would be great.
Sorry, you started a, a motion there.
I did, and I'm trying to remember the words. All right. I move that we hold a, excuse me, we allow Rachel Walensky to put together the packet for applications along with a date of January 5th as the date special meeting for, during which time we'll conduct interviews.
No.
That's special meeting.
The, the, and close of business on January 5th will be the deadline for receiving applications for those positions.
What Matt said. And, um
So move to it.
That's it.
That's it.
You'll set
Thank you.
Meeting at it, once you determine how many applications you have.
Got you, okay.
Application, that's a moot point.
During January 15th.
Anybody support that?
I will. Oh, Mike did?
Didn't you?
No, I did not, I didn't, I was waiting to see if it was done.
Set it.
Okay.
Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
Councilmember Walchuk?
Yes.
Mayor Walagora?
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember
Yes.
All right, thank you. Next we have new business. First is the digester grind pump purchase and variance of purchasing policy. And City Engineer Steve Schultz is here.
All right. Due to its failure, the digester grind pump, one of many pumps required in the water recycling plant process, is in need of repair or replacement. Due to its age and conditions, staff believes it will be more beneficial to replace the pump as the initial cost estimates indicate the repair cost will exceed more than half the cost of a new pump and will not guarantee that additional repairs might be needed down the road. The concern we are having is that this, this is a straight equipment purchase where Veolia will actually do the install. The rough estimates that we have received make this repair replacement decision indicate the pump, indicate that the pump will exceed our existing $10,000 purchase order limits. While most of the vendors we, we would solicit pricing from are used to providing prices via quotes, many shy away from the sealed bid process as the documents are cumbersome and the process is unfamiliar to them. When we have worked with vendors in the past to acquire equipment through these means, several have either not provided bids or have significantly increased their prices to cover any unknowns within the bidding process. The vendors required for the pump replacement, for this particular pump replacement, have done this in the past and stated that above reasoning. For this reason, I am requesting a variance in the council policy statement 18, purchasing policy, to allow for the solicitation of quotes and issuance of a purchase order for the equipment exceeding $10,000. This would not waive the requirement for council to approve it prior to issuance of the purchase order, just the methods of acquiring the prices and waiving the issuance of a contract in lieu of a purchase order. So the suggested motion would be to approve the request for variance from the purchasing policy and issue a purchase order for the digester grind pump.
No issues here.
I have no issues. I move we approve the request for a variance from a purchasing policy and issue a purchase order for the digester grind pump.
Second.
Councilmember Walchuk?
Yes.
Mayor Walagora?
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson? Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Next up, 2023 Fair Avenue Reconstruction Project, Steve.
All right. On October 31st, 2023, the city received an open bid for the 2023 Fair Avenue Construction Project. This project includes the reconstruction of water and sewer infrastructure and street reconstruction on Fair Avenue from Washington to Ninth Avenue. Bids were sent to 13 firms as well as posted on the city website with two bids received as follows. And you can see them there, MacArthur Construction was red low at 1.1 million 90,882 dollars. Adequate funding is budgeted and is available in the water and sewer funds for this project. Based on the review of the bid, I recommend the following motion to award the 2023 Fair Avenue Reconstruction Project to MacArthur Construction in the amount of $1,190,882.
I have a question for you. Bill, I have a question for you. I live on Fair Avenue. I'm not, I didn't think so because I'm benefiting, actually, I'm going to be inconvenienced because we're going to do some construction there. But I just wanted to, you know, check in with you on that and I meant to do it sooner, but I was wondering if you have an opinion on that.
Oh, you're abstaining? That's the opinion, that's the opinion you're asking.
Yeah, that's the opinion I'm asking, sir. Because we haven't run into this before, I don't believe. And I'm like, well, this is new to me as well, so.
I mean, I think technically you would benefit from that project being done because you'll have a new street in front of your house, a new water sewer. But I'd leave it to council discretion if you think that that's worthy. I mean, I, I think it's arguable that it does receive a benefit for that particular project.
So does its neighbors.
I would
Yeah, but this is just awarding the bid, right? I mean
It's just awarding.
It's not a conflict of interest because that's usually what the concern is.
Well, here's, here's why it becomes a potential issue. If you vote 3-2 and his vote is to approve it, somebody could say, well, the only reason you approved that is because it's going to benefit the street in front of your house. It's going to, your property value might go up because you got a random street there. So
I'll do it. To err on caution, I would, I'll move that we allow Councilmember Noah to abstain from the vote. We've voted, yeah, I know.
All right, to, to move?
Oh, yeah, we're just, Anna's taking notes.
Oh, she's
You can discuss it if that matters.
On the abstention, yeah, okay.
Mayor Walagora? Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
And Councilmember Walchuk?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah. Award the 2023 Fair Avenue Reconstruction Project to MacArthur Construction in the amount of $1,190,882.
Second.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember Walchuk?
Yes.
And Mayor Walagora?
Hi.
Back in the poll.
All right. Thank you. Welcome back. Next up, we have the 2023 fire hydrant replacement, Steve.
All right. On October 31st, 2023, the city received an open bid for the 2023 fire hydrant replacement project. This project was necessitated due to several aged hydrants being broken and unusable. Due to the depth of the water main connecting these hydrants to the system, city crews would not be able to complete the replacements. Bid documents were posted on the city website and sent to five local firms and plan rooms with three bids received. You can see the listing there. E&amp;M Property Improvements is a, is a new company, but the owner has previously worked for other companies that we, that have worked for us and contracted with us and they perform similar work for the city. Good to see a new face in the, in the game, so that's good. So they perform, you know, similar work for the city while employed by another contractor and anticipate that they will be able to complete the work without any issues. Adequate funding is available in this year's budget to cover these, costs of these repairs. And I recommend the following motion to award the 2023 fire hydrant replacement project to E&amp;M Property Improvements in the amount of $26,775.
Maybe I missed it, Steve, but how many fire hydrants are being replaced?
Ah, three.
Three, okay. No questions here.
I move I move we award the 2023 fire hydrant replacement project to E and M Property Improvements in the amount of 26,775 dollars.
Support.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
Councilmember Walchuk?
Yes.
Mayor Walbora?
Hi.
Mayor Potem Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you. Next up, Colligan Plaza Water Fountain Wish Money.
All right, have to apologize. The memo that I received from Mike Collins after they recovered the coins was inadvertently left out of the memo, but I did send it, I think, this afternoon to you guys. So just reading through that, staff has considered the attached memo from Mike Collins in regard to the wishing coins recovered from the Colligan Plaza Water Fountain. Well, while there are many worthy causes that the money could be donated to, we feel that it may prove difficult to choose one over another. The recommendation this time would be just to use the money toward the forthcoming improvements to Colligan Plaza.
Can I ask a question? In, in the past, what, where does that money go?
This is the first time we've come upon this. This, somebody, you know, we kind of threw around the term like three years maybe, or maybe it was five years with the coins. It's been collected before. It comes out of there and it goes in a five gallon bucket and it's dirty, filthy, disgusting, and it has to be cleaned. And I think nobody wanted the job before. So they had a safe place for it over in the garage, and that's where they kept it. And it, and it collected for so long now that Mike Collins went, wow, where is this from and why do we keep it? And somebody finally decided to wash it up. So that's where we're at. I, I have talked to quite a few people on it. Nobody knows, you know, in the past, what has happened with it. This is the first encounter that I've had with it, so.
I, I would like to know, like going forward, because Colligan Plaza will be redone and will need known. Or, you know, things will happen at Colligan Plaza. Since that's where the money's generated, why can't that money just be designated for Colligan Plaza, period?
It couldn't. That can be, your, your choice, yeah.
Expand the motion to.
He had some.
Definitely.
In all, in all future collections, yeah. Something of that nature.
Wait, so it's probably going to be used in this fiscal year. We would only move it into a committed or a designated fund if it wasn't used by the end of this fiscal year. So we've already reseeded it into parks donations. And it just kind of, it, it just goes into like a general parks.
I don't have a problem, you know, putting it into a parks fund like that. I mean, it's going to benefit everybody eventually. It doesn't have to be specifically Colligan, but any of the parks. I mean, whether you're not having a specific.
Like Colligan Plaza doesn't have a specific revenue line. It's just parks. That's where the expenses are too.
Okay. But could it be designated later?
Only if it's not used by the end of the year, which you said it would be.
Yeah.
There's a.
Yeah, oh, certainly, we certainly would, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, we're spending a little money there this spring, so, yeah.
That's fine, that's fine with me. I mean, just knowing that it's going to parks, which is, everybody gets some benefit out of the parks in general, so.
It would be nice at some point to have a plaque at, at the fountain or the, it's not going to be a fountain anymore. Just to let the public know where those funds go. Where your wishes went. Yeah, wishes went. And I think it would encourage more people to toss in points.
Yeah. Bars of gold.
Yeah. Debit cards.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sounds good.
So I make a motion that we use the wishing coin funds and put it in the parks. Every year.
Every, and going forward also.
Perpetuity, okay. Second.
Quick question from the crowd. How much was there in there?
Eight hundred and sixty-four.
Wow.
Eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars and forty-six cents. They equated to 27,000 wishes. Twenty-one thousand four hundred and seventy-one pennies, sixteen hundred and forty-three nickels, twenty-one hundred and one dimes, and fourteen hundred and twenty-six quarters and five dollar coins. But I don't know if that, because they were collecting them in a bucket over time, I don't know how, how much.
Yeah, that's not one year. It could be three, it could be five years.
Wow, because the bucket was pretty disgusting.
Yeah, it was, yeah. So disgusting that people just kind of forget.
Wishing it further.
I didn't want to deal with that, yeah.
Take it to the bank and.
Right, yeah.
All right. A motion on the floor, right? You got a second on that?
Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
Councilmember Walchuk?
Yes.
Mayor Walbora?
Hi.
Mayor Potem Johnson? Councilmember.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Next up is the selection of a new council representative on the Alpena County Land Bank Authority. That is currently me. When I asked Rachel to, or Anna, to put it on the agenda as a replacement, I actually thought that the next meeting was in December and I wanted somebody else to be, be appointed to, to take the wheel. And then I sent out an email that most of you probably got this morning that said, it's actually this Wednesday morning at 9:00 AM. It, it's, it's, this is a new, this is relatively new, but it's moving fairly quickly. The Land Bank Authority, it's not new. It's only new to the county. Land banks have been around for, I don't know, 17 years or something, I think, in the state. But it's a, it could really be something else. It's really pretty, pretty exciting. But it does move fast because it's grants. And grant windows are very narrow. Lenny and Kim do the, Kim is the clerk and the chairman, clerk of the county and the chairman of the, chairperson of this board. And then Lenny is brought in from Target to kind of guide us through the grant program. So it's, it's pretty good stuff, but it's really important. And they normally meet at 9:00 AM on the designated days, so. Whoever takes it would have to be available at that time. I'm retired. Got some retired folk.
Yeah, well, not retired.
And you might, you know, you might have time for that kind of thing, too, to, to slip out from positions. But I just wanted to throw it up there for somebody to take that over from.
I'm happy to serve.
You interested as well, Manny?
Well, I need one. We have a wrestler for it.
Okay.
If you, if you want to serve, you can. It's up to you.
I would like to serve.
Okay, go ahead.
Elderly, you know.
So then.
People are the same age.
I'm much younger, yeah.
Nine o'clock Wednesday, meal.
Okay.
It's really interesting. Okay. Do we have to have action on that? Uh, I think there was because there was action to appoint me.
So I move we appoint Danny to the Land Bank Authority. Second.
Send, uh, yeah, you probably should rescind your appointment.
So we have to do that first? Okay. So I move we rescind the mayor's appointment to the Land Bank Authority?
Second.
Sounds horrible, I think I did something wrong.
Yeah.
Good.
Do you rescind? Vote on that?
Yes. Don't put down any bad reason, though, it's right.
Self-imposed.
Self-imposed rescinding.
Councilmember Walchuk?
Yes.
Mayor Walbora?
Hi.
Mayor Potem Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
And then the other motion is technically still sitting around there.
Now vacant position on the Land Bank Authority.
With Danny.
With Danny Mitchell. We had a motion in support on that already, didn't we?
Yes.
Well, that's it.
I made the motion.
In, in, second.
Mayor Walbora?
Hi.
Mayor Potem Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
And Councilmember Walchuk?
Yes.
Vote, okay?
All right, thank you. Thank you, Danny.
Thank you.
Next up, 2023 DDA expansion interlocal agreement with the county of Alpena. And Gentry from the DDA is here. Expect she's just going to present that.
Good evening. Thank you for the previous motions. I appreciate it. I'm very excited right now. Okay, so dear city council members, attached for your consideration is an interlocal agreement with the county of Alpena regarding the Alpena DDA boundary expansion and 2023 development and TIF plan. The Alpena County Commissioners approved the agreement on September 12, 2023. After the public hearing took place on the DDA boundary expansion on December 5, 2022, the county commissioners had 60 days to opt out and exempt its taxes from capture under the plan, which they did. In lieu of a tax capture, they approved this agreement, which would contribute funds to the boundary expansion and its associated economic development activities. The amounts over 30 years are based on what the DDA would have captured from the county's taxes. Um, the agreement will need to be approved by city council once the two ordinances regarding the DDA boundary expansion are adopted. And I know Anna, I don't know if you wanted to give an update on anything from the auditors about the, the county's contribution as outlined in the agreement. You also don't have to, but.
While she's looking for that, does anybody have any questions on the county's agreement for Ann?
No questions.
So Chelsea McConnell, our auditor, said that, looking at the current potential agreement, it looks like there is a 45 day clause. Five. Once that 45 days is up, the DDA may use the funds being contributed annually as long as the funds are used as stated in the agreement per number three.
And who can rescind? Who has the 45 days?
It has to be a referendum.
It's not either body, it's the public, right? Correct?
Yeah, yep. So in section five on here says it may be terminated or rescinded by a referendum of the residents of either the county or the city, not more than 45 days after the approval of the agreement by the governing body. So we're already 45 days out from September 12th. Yeah. Right, yeah. I don't know what day it is.
And then this note, the governing body is the county? Or is it? Or either the county or the city not more than 45 days after the approval of the agreement by the governing, by the governing body?
We wanted to be sure. I mean, there's no reason why we couldn't wait 45 days as the city to use those funds.
Right.
Did you get clarification on the exhibit B with the payment? Because in the agreement, it says that it's for a period of 30 years, beginning in '23 and ending in 2053. When I did that on my fingers, that comes out to 31 years. Not 30. And then in the exhibit, it doesn't say like when the payments are. It just says year one, year two. So what is year one? Is that going to be '23? So that's where I had some confusion.
Well, the first two years are the 129. The first two years, they paid 129,100, you know, 166. And then they paid 4,166 every year thereafter till they reach 30.
So is the first payment of 129,000 in '23 yet?
I took the maybe 24 personally.
So then the last payment of 4,166 is going to be in the year 2052? So it says 2053. That's when the agreement goes through.
Yeah, thanks, I didn't, I called, but I wasn't able to get ahold of anyone that late, so.
Yeah, when this was discussed at the county, they discussed that year one would be 2023 with their calendar year. So we would be receiving this after a council approves, because this is dependent on council approving the expansion. So year one would be 2023. And '24.
So payment number 30 would be made in calendar year 2052.
Okay, and this doesn't have an agreement?
So it's going to go through September 31st of 2053? So that would be one year without any sort of payment? If you change the terms on this terms?
Or just leave a year with no payment?
Yeah.
Or if they don't make their first payment until '24?
Right.
Since we're almost there anyway.
Right.
Yeah.
So I think maybe there needs to be a little bit of clarification on these terms.
I mean, we could get a clarification after the agreement because that's not really going to change the agreement itself, just when the payments are made.
Yeah, and the December 31st, 2053 is referring to the development and TIF plan expiration. So at that point, the DDA would, if it was not renewed before then, it would go away and the tax capture would, would end.
I think these terms are also lining up with the county their calendar year. I was just looking for more detail as to when these payments are going to be made because I'd like to budget them in the appropriate year. If they make it in the beginning of the first six months, it's going to be one fiscal year. The other six months is another fiscal year, so.
So there is currently no language in here that says when, when the payment would be made. It does just say.
It just says year one, whatever. According to the terms, it says beginning in '23. So I would assume that a payment would be made in '23. Because it's their year one. As it's their year one.
I do believe that it is, it is going to be made this year. Yeah. It is, from the conversation that we had in there. Uh huh.
Do you want that to be clarified? Do you want that to be clarified in writing on this contract before we approve it?
Yeah, I don't know what, what you'd recommend, since they've technically already signed the agreement.
I suppose those are questions that you can just ask them, so that you know when to expect the money. But I'm going to assume that it's probably going to be at the beginning of the year, after they've done their budget, then the monies that go off. But I can't say that with certainty, but they could tell you that when in, when in the year you can expect it, so you know where to budget, what year to put it in. Yeah.
Well, I also assume, assuming that they didn't intend to pay anything without approval of this.
Right.
So if this through today, first, the end of the first year of the, of the approval is November twentieth of twenty twenty-four. So I guess without knowing exactly what they said at the meeting and what their intent was, if they were going to pay that first year's payment right at the start of the first year, or if they were going to pay it at the end of the first year.
My.
They only have two years to use that money, so the intent is this year, they're going to give you a chunk. Next year, they're going to give you a chunk, because they only have two years to spend it.
Like right after budget time.
Right.
You'd, if that's the case, you'd get the first two payments in our, in your first fiscal year. This fiscal year. You got one at the end of this year, one at the beginning of next year, twenty twenty-four. Um, that's in, that's in one budget cycle of ours.
Yes.
But really, it's, I mean, I s- I see that it's, that it's our budget, and you run our budget. It's more of an issue with Ann, because it's just a budget amendment if you end up getting it sooner or later. Because we're not, it's not really
Yeah.
not the city's involvement, so to speak.
But just counting out how many years are here in this term, it doesn't quite line up with thirty years. Thirty-one.
But you said like twenty twenty-three with the.
With the TIF plan that expires in December twenty, or twenty fifty-three.
I'm fine if, you know.
I'm fine, yeah.
Staff is comfortable and everything else, so I'm good.
I mean, if it started today, it would technically end November twentieth of twenty fifty-three. That would be thirty years from today. This says it ends December thirty-first, twenty fifty.
And that's the TIF plan remains active. That's when the TIF expires.
Right.
It's not really.
Right.
Not necessarily the payments.
Right.
Because exhibit B has, you know, year one, two, three, four, five. I mean, there's no, it's there. There are thirty years of payments in exhibit B.
So uh, the beginning of the TIF plan is January first to twenty-four?
Yeah.
And no, the, well, the expansion would go into effect, like it would technically be part of the DDA boundary whenever the ordinance takes place ten days after approval. But then we will not collect our TIF until the spring from twenty twenty-three values based on the twenty twenty-two base. So it's kind of a staggered how we receive our funds anyway. Um, that makes sense. Yeah. So the plan would go into effect essentially after the ordinance is adopted, but we wouldn't see the finances of it until next year.
I'm glad you guys got it. We can work through.
The logistics, yeah.
Hopefully, if the mayor in twenty fifty-three resides at here. And I still have one attorney that I would deal with. Because I don't think I would.
You're standing with our. That's where I think this money is coming from, the county, is that it doesn't necessarily, it has to be obligated by the end of uh, calendar year twenty-four. But I think you technically have until the twenty-six, end of twenty-six to actually spend the funds. It just has to have, be obligated for something by the end of twenty-four.
But they've decided to do it this way.
Right, yeah.
So we'll test it.
Yeah. Yeah, so if you're comfortable, I have the recommendation that you would approve the agreement. And approve the twenty twenty-three DDA expansion into a local agreement with the county of Alpena and authorize Mayor Matt Walagora to sign. If you're comfortable with the terms and the, the clarification in there.
Mayor, so moved.
Okay.
Mayor Porton Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
Councilmember Walchek?
Thank you, thank you, Ann. You're going to stay here for.
Yep, one more fun item.
Senator Alleyway closure.
Okay, um, so the alleyway between Second and Third Avenue has continued to grow as a unique public space in downtown. This summer, more and more people use the alleyway as a gathering space. We used it during the Flower Festival in Shades of Fall for live music, vendors, kids' activities, and more. Downtown businesses like The Fresh Palette, Rusty Petunias, and Hopside Brewery used it for their outdoor events and concerts. This year, Pied Piper School partnered with us to plant and care for the flowers. We also completed six pieces of artwork through our Fresh Waves project with grant support from the Michigan Arts and Culture Council and the Sunset Project. We also received grant support from the Community Foundation for Northeast Michigan for the lights and the planters. With these partnerships and investments this year, the vision for the alleyway as a unique gathering space in the downtown truly came to life. So we are requesting the closure of the alleyway to continue through this winter and then up until next November first, twenty twenty-four. It is our desire to have the alleyway closed permanently to automobile traffic, and this closure will allow us to trial a winter season and plan for next summer as well. I have discussed this with Shannon at the Department of Public Works, and they are open to the closure through the winter months. We will be needing to discuss different options for snow removal more in depth. Um, how this year's goes will determine any future requests or plans for other updates in the alleyway, for example, bollards. The adjacent business owners are supportive of closing the alleyway year-round. Keeping it close to automobile traffic has enhanced safety for people walking and biking. Adding lights, murals, planters, and seating have encouraged business owners to take advantage of the space for their own events while creating one more unique public space downtown for residents and tourists alike. I've added some photos to this memo, so you can see how the alleyway truly came to life this year. I appreciate your continued support of these projects that have helped revitalize our downtown. So my recommendation or request is to approve the closure of the alleyway between Second and Third Avenue through November first, twenty twenty-four.
I don't have any issues.
I don't have any issues. I'd like to move that we approve, approve the clo- of the alleyway between Second and Third Avenue through November first, twenty twenty-four, second.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
Councilmember Walchek? Mayor Walagora?
Hi.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, I move that we adjourn the closed session. We have some update on pending litigation, as you can catch tribunal, City of Alpena versus the County of Alpena.
Second.
Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
Councilmember Walchek?
Yes.
Mayor Walagora?
Hi.
Mayor Porton Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
And it's a little background on the. It's just a.
I know you can switch.
Talk about the chill program for the, for the flam banks.